I tried to run with it and damn, just one slight turn it was real.
All right, everybody, let's go ahead and get started. It's five thirty. Uh, welcome to the city council conference for Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five. We have one item on the agenda, and it is a presentation discussion regarding the urban forestry master plan. And we have city staff here from Parks and Rec to talk to us about that.
Hello, thank you. Uh, I'm James Briggs. I'm the Park Development Manager. I am actually in charge of our city, our entire city forestry crew. Do you see here? We have one, we have a. So, uh, we are excited about this. It's been a long time coming. So back in twenty-four, we contacted and contracted with Davy Resource Group to produce an urban forest master plan. Included a process of assessing the current state of forestry division. Here gathering input from steering committee. We had stakeholder meetings, we had public meetings. We had a lot of data come in. And then we'll go over that as you see in the presentation. We compared Norman's forestry division to cities of similar size, city of similar region, and also to national standards as far as how forestry divisions operate. Um, Davy worked in close partnership with all different city staff. We had meetings, focus groups with different departments, see how they interact with forestry, uh, cause it's, you know, public works. Everybody utilities will all interact with our tree canopy. So we're trying to achieve a, uh, urban forest master plan, which will sort of help guide the work of forestry division, the city, all of us for the next twenty years, fifteen to twenty years. So after months and months of public study, Davy presented us a, or an urban forest master plan draft. We reviewed it, and then we kind of tweaked it to make sure it lined up graphically and philosophically with community wildfire protection plan, which y'all saw recently, and we adopted, um, with the, uh, Parks and Rec and Culture Master Plan, which we did as part of the A and Norman process. Graphically, it looks the same as those, so they all kind of marry together. It went to park board last week, actually. So it went through park board last week, and they had a couple of little comments. But we're excited to share with this tonight. We have Dana Carter, who is the Urban and Community Forestry Specialist with Davy. I'm gonna let her go through her presentation and excited to get this done.
Thank you, James. Thank you for having me here. I've been in this room before talking about trees. I think it was in twenty nineteen I came and visited, and we had a really good conversation, and I love where this has gone and what has happened in this community. So we'll start here. This is our agenda. We'll go through the process that Davy does. Um, we'll talk a little bit about the urban forest, what your urban forest looks like, what the program actually looks like, how it, how it operates and how it works, and the most important thing really are recommendations. So with our planning process, we really talk about, it's a twenty-year guide, right? It's going to show, um, not only citizens, but it will also show internally what will hap- what should happen with Norman's trees over the next twenty years. It sets goals um, that we worked on together, and then, of course, recommended action steps to achieve those goals. We use a typical planning process when we do this, adaptive management. We look at what the city has, what they want. That's partly through community engagement. How do we get there? What are the steps that are needed to grow the urban forest, grow the canopy? We talk a lot about that. And then how are we doing is really the role of Norman? And how do you, what are those benchmarks that you can measure yourself against or into the future? Here's where we started. I think this timeline really goes way back when we started having conversations a long time ago. But we really started the project in twenty twenty-four, late summer. It was hot. I remember being here. And I lived in Texas then probably too at that time. Uh, then we really went through the plan and the policies and the program review in the winter, and then we also worked on stakeholder engagement. I had the opportunity to come here and do some stakeholder engagement. My colleague also did as well, Sandra Albro. We did public engagement with, um, and we showed them draft recommendations as well. We wrote the plan over the last few weeks, gave it to the team. They gave us feedback, and now we're in the final plan, um, stages. We had a couple of community meetings. We had a steering committee, which people had the opportunity to take a look at it, both internal and external. We did some focus groups, a lot of interviews. That gives us that real detailed information that we need to determine where, uh, what people really want, and what are obstacles also in growing the urban forest. We did a community survey, and then, of course, like I said, we had two community meetings, which were, um, one was held on a very rainy Saturday, and we still had fairly good attendance. And community engagement, we asked, you know, people where they lived, and, uh, a lot of people live in Norman, and they don't know where they, oh, there they go. They don't know what their ward is. Uh, this is not, this is, this is typical. Uh, but eighty-four percent feel there are too few trees and, um, in the park system, and many feel that it is extremely important to have more trees in their neighborhood. These are not unusual findings in any way. So a little bit about the urban forest, really, what is an urban forest? It's all of the trees in the community. Um, they add shade, they have environmental benefits, they add beauty. And it's not just the trees that the city manages, although this is somewhat what this focuses on. It's the trees throughout the community. So a lot of conversation at the community meetings about the trees on their streets, the trees in their yards, and the trees in, in the, um, you know, at churches and schools and things like that. So people really have a good concept of what the urban forest is in Norman. The tree cover in Norman, this was, um, from the, the, the map on the, uh, right is from the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and that showed a thirty percent canopy. Um, and then the, the, the one on the right, or I'm sorry, the one on the left is, um, from American Forest, and that's a tree equity score map. Both of those, the one on the left is, uh, free and available to anybody, so we included that in there. And then the, um, Community Wildfire Protection Plan, you can see that grayed out area. That's where the developed area, and that's where the most, um, canopy is. I will say that one thing, and I think we go into this a little more detail, canopy is growing where you're growing because you're planting new trees, but there is also concern about trees being removed from development. We had the pleasure of coming in as part of this project and doing a park tree inventory. We, um, brought in, I think, three foresters to do that, and they came out into the field and found five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five trees. There is some breakdown in what that looks like. Remember, these are only park trees too that we did. Of course, eastern red cedar is your number one. You are not alone in that either, just so you know. Uh, lace bark elm, bald cypress, American elm, and loblolly pine are really the, the major trees in the area. Um, there's a, a rule, and it says you should have no more than ten percent of one species. So you're very close to approaching that with eastern red cedar.
We didn't include Sutton or other wildland parks.
No, there are, there are other wildlife parks that were not.
Five thousand seven hundred without Sutton Wilderness or Saxon or Ruby Grant.
Yeah, that's right.
Just real quick, do we have any plans for the eastern red cedar? Cause isn't that an invasive tree as well?
Recommendation.
We'll get there. If we don't answer that, we'll come back. Okay. But we really like to talk about what the benefits of trees provide. This is important for community meetings and community engagement because these are the actual, um, dollar values that these trees provide annually. So stormwater, carbon capture, um, absorbing pollutants, those are the things that, um, trees do day in and day out as they just sit there. The community really thought that cooling, create cooling shade was very, very important to them, and providing wildlife habitat was the other second thing that was the, um, the highest for them. Um, I think that there was a lot of discussion around building neighborhood character in the community meeting that I led, and I think that that was probably a bit lower because we talked about it so much. And, uh, there's other things that, you know, people don't really know about, about improving mental and physical health. Those are some of the newer kinds of sciences that are, um, around urban forestry. And I bet you that that nineteen percent on reducing stormwater runoff would have gone up if we'd had the meeting after that rainstorm that we had to drive through to, to, um, to leave the, leave the area. So this is a little bit about the forestry activities of your forester. One of the things that I want to say is that in, uh, we do a lot of plans across the country, and, and you do a lot with a little. You do a lot with a little. It's really important, um, to, to give the credit for that. But six hundred and eighty-seven trees were planted, which is really good. Um, trees were pruned, trees were moved, and nine hundred trees were given away. Uh, giveaway trees are great. They help increase the idea of, um, the, the role of citizens in urban forestry. But at the same time, forestry staffing is pretty low. If I know how, just a moment. There we go. This is a big computer, fancy. Oh, I went the wrong way. This one. I can't touch it. There you go.
So, um, that's trees planted by the city of Norman.
Yes.
And trees pruned, eighty-five trees removed by the city of Norman. Does that include a street project that removes trees, but is also adding them?
I think so. We got that data from our Tree City USA reports, like, and some of those numbers are skewed a little because it was during some of our Big Norman Forward projects where we planted a lot of trees. So the number went way up during some of those, like, there was, you know, a hundred and something trees planted at Reeves. There was, you know, maybe a hundred and two grants, several at the YFAK. So some of those numbers were unusually higher in some of that time.
So that would include trees that we've had to remove for whatever reasons, and then, uh, trees that might have been removed because of a city project that was going on. Okay.
On the nine hundred trees given away, when we give away trees, are we handing out a brochure that's like right tree, right place?
And, and they get actually talked to by our forester. I think everybody gets talked to by Colin when they get their tree. So here's the brochure, it says, it's, it's, so it's kind of a.
It has both, both planting instructions on one side and right tree, right place and that stuff.
Great, awesome. Thank you.
So in terms of staffing, um, there's three staff members in the Parks Maintenance Division that spend part-time, one-third or more, on trees themselves. Um, there's one person for proactive maintenance. And, um, and then there's contractors for, uh, larger and immediate jobs, and then utility forestry, of course, is managed by the, um, corporate Corporation Commission. And one thing that, um, we should note is that, um, I do work for a big tree contractor, and I say this anyway. It costs more money to hire us than it does to have internal staff, so, um, that's been proven out a number of times. And this is kind of what that staffing looks like. So there's Colin down there in the green in the bottom. And, uh, the other people that help him when he has the opportunity, the US average, as you can see. And then cities with a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand have quite a bit, have quite a few more. So one thing to keep in mind is that, um, park maintenance staff, this is park maintenance staff, and so we're trying to compare apples to apples in this as best as we can. Many cities have both, manage both street trees and park trees, and that's their full, that's their full department. So when you look at the forestry budget, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you can see how, um, it is, it is, um, divided up here. Pruning and removal is the largest cost. That generally is, um, what goes on with cities. Um, management, planting, and tree giveaway are the other categories that fit into that. It is a small portion of the municipal budget. So this is what it would, it looks like in comparison to other cities, cities in the south, cities of the same size, and then all cities. And this was out of a study that was done nationwide. That is, um, used quite a bit for this kind of comparison. I looked at this slide a little bit more closely yesterday as I was getting ready for this again, and the Action Center requests, I think, are really important. So forty percent of other debris and storm debris is where, um, you know, mud, many of those requests come from. But if you go down there to emergency tree blocking services, and if you go down to emergency tree limb and emergency fallen tree, and you add all those up together, that's going to be a, a significant portion of the Action Center requests. With proactive maintenance, you end up, um, with less of those requests, and that's one thing to keep in mind for the future. Also, um, in talking to my colleague with this, the private tree request takes the time of the forester to talk to people about their trees. And, you know, one thing about a, a good urban foresters are also really good with PR, and I think that you've got that going on here, but you do, you do need to know that it does take time. And the public concerns kind of mirror that whole thing with forty-four percent, um, of people see downside in trees, you know, during storms. And I know that people who've lived here for a long time have gone through some ice, significant ice storms, some significant winds, and so they're worried about that. And the other concerns are, of course, causing damage to utilities because their, uh, their electricity, um, their power goes out, lifted damage to sidewalks, block signs, streetlights, invisibility. Trees are, some people are concerned about the expense to maintain them, and that they drop, um, leaves, seeds, fruit, and other debris.
You can reduce that number two and just bury as many of them as possible.
So we, um, have some recommendations here, and the first one is really about establishing a forestry certification crew within Parks and Recreation to grow, um, the opportunity for Colin to have some people he could depend on to help him become a more proac- proactively maintain the trees. Um, acquire a gravel truck, a very important tool in urban forestry, to handle the large woody debris so he doesn't have to contract that out. Um, create a forestry standard operating procedures manual so that as he gets a crew, everybody knows what they're doing and they're all on the same page. And then release annual reports, meaning come report to you and tell you how it's all working. And that gives you an idea of what it would look like if we actually, if you actually added more people and how you would catch up to the US average. So it's a three-person tree, tree crew, and a, and a chief as well, crew chief as well. And that's what the budget would look like if we add, if we added one point four million. So you would take it up to equivalency of the, um, programs in the south that were reviewed. So recommendation two is to prioritize the maintenance of public trees, and so we talk a lot about routine, um, cycles. So some cities, uh, really depend on this, and that they touch a tree every five years or every ten years. After two thousand eight, Los Angeles went from a seven-year cycle to a fifty-six-year cycle. So it's important that funding may get maintained. Um, and, and cities vary on what they believe is the right cycle. In urban forestry, it's this five to ten years is really pretty normal. And then watering and caring for newly planted trees, that's a, that's a priority, uh, maintenance idea. The, when you care for a young tree, the first three to five years of its life, you can do it from the ground. So you can create its shape, and it could be, it will grow better and need less pruning later on. So that's one of the reasons why this is one. And then there's contractors for high priority removal and pruning, the big things, the, you know, the giant trees that, that, that Colin's team doesn't really want to deal with. And then protecting the urban forest. So recommend tree species that are climate and pest resilient. So climate, with climate change, species are changing. Uh, we're seeing more, um, trees from central and south Texas that work up here, and also, um, there, there is, um, new recommendations that came out from the USDA about two years ago, so those tree lists are starting to reflect those changes. Measure and track citywide tree canopy. So although you have a tree canopy study that came out of the, um, the wild, Community Wildfire Protection Plan, a canopy study that can drill down a little bit deeper and see where trees need to be planted and what, where, what species need to go where will be really beneficial for you so that you can determine how much canopy you really want and need. And then monitor and manage invasive species and pests. There's a lot of things out there. Emerald ash borer.
Like the red cedar.
Right, there you go. Yeah, monitor and manage invasive species and pests, yes. So, um, um, Emerald Ash Borer is here. It's in Oklahoma. Um, it is marching up from Texas as quickly as it can, and, um, it is, um, it is devastating to ash trees, but there's others, and we detail those really in the plan as well. And then support the park-related recommendations for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which we actually put in there as well. And then partner with nonprofits and volunteers on invasive species removal and ecosystem restoration. Uh, a, a program doesn't live in alone, and there are citizens who want to help, and that's the beauty of a community that, um, you know, that came out to the community meetings and learned and talked to Colin about what can be done. So I think that you have a really good start on that potential there. Recommendation four is planning for sustainable growth, and that's, um, you know, this is a growing community, and I, I think that you've, you know that probably better than anybody. So what is happening in the, to the trees as this growth happens, whether they're being planted, being required to be planted, or whether or not they're being removed, those are all real critical things. Identify priority tree planting areas for human and environmental health. You can do that through a canopy study. Um, expand neighbor woods program to plant trees in lower canopy areas because, um, that is what that American Forest map showed, that there are areas of low canopy that need more trees. And then work with other city divisions, um, to plant along trails, biplanes, and improve streets. And then study that tree canopy changed by land use, which is, um, rather than just saying, well, we're gonna plant a bunch of trees here because there's an open space, that may be an open space on purpose, like a baseball field, and we're not planting trees there. So you want to make sure that it's done by what, you know, by land use. And then review the development-related impacts during, um, pre-development planning. So before the lot gets scraped, what's gonna happen to those trees? And then promote the right tree in the right place. I love that this already came up once. So provide resources that help residents, uh, businesses and developers choose the right, right species, right? Things are changing, new species. Go to the nurseries, look to see what's out there. And promote programs that preserve historically significant trees. This was something we heard, that people like their big trees, and they want to make sure that they're, um, that they are saved. And then pilot a volunteer program that trains residents to serve as neighborhood tree liaisons so that they can keep an eye on things, you know? Even if you add three point one people to the staff, it's still small. And so people who are engaged and concerned can help and support what's happening.
I was curious about the programs for historically significant trees. What qualifies a tree as historically significant? And are those resources in Oklahoma?
Um, there are, yeah, it's up to the community what the standard is. And, you know, in some cities, it's, um, every tree over a certain size. Some cities, it's, um, s- specific species that have to be saved. In Austin, Texas, it's all their oaks, every oak, and every tree that isn't an ash tree right now. Every one of those trees is considered to be preserved. Historic ones are treated even more differently. So it kind of depends on the community.
So Norman would need to develop its own historically significant tree program?
Yeah, and, and I think that you have a lot of citizens who are interested in that. So you would, you would, you would find a, um, there's a happy medium in there, I guess is the best way for me to say that.
We are, as a side note, again, Davy helped us get started on this, we're revising our tree ordinance. It includes a whole section about, kind of like the historic district, uh, neighbors able to apply to be hit, uh, a historic tree district. So say, you know, La Homa, where all the, uh, sycamores are, they can apply, and fifty-one percent would do that. We're working out the, the wording and all that to create these, and it doesn't, doesn't make them our trees, but it allows us to help with the maintenance and then replacement of those trees as time goes on. So we, we are working on a way to just officially designate through the will of the people, this area. I know from this block to that block is a historic tree district. Um, so that's sort of the angle we're taking.
Have to be exclusively historic neighborhoods. It could be anywhere that, that's core Norman that has a wonderful canopy of old trees.
Correct, and, and, you know, and, and people don't think about, like, Brookhaven is a really old neighborhood. There's a lot of big trees out there too. So if they want to apply for that area too, there's, there's some older neighborhoods that, that aren't even in the core anymore that probably have, that areas that could say, we're a historically significant tree district and, or historic tree district. So we're, we're working that out, and it'll be coming to you soon, sooner than later.
Only one tree thing at a time, though. Um, so the last recommendation is partner on plan implementation. So this, this can't be done alone. And so we suggested that, um, there's a review process for, um, the team to come in front of the, um, the parks board and say, this is what we've done, and this is where we are, and this is where we're having challenges because, you know, it doesn't always go as smoothly as, we can write it all down on paper, but there may be something that happens like a huge ice storm that just puts, sets everything back. So we want to make sure that there's that com- open communication. Volunteer planting days, tree care events, and educational workshops. You've got some great resources. Um, the state urban forestry coordinator is one of his, one of Colin's friends, and so there's a lot of people who want to help. And, um, I think that that's a really good thing as well. And large institutions and businesses need to create tree plans. You've got, um, some major landholders here that also, uh, they're part of the canopy. They are part of the canopy itself, so you want to make sure that they're on board with what you're doing as well. Um, partnerships and communications with utility forestry, when I was in this room in twenty nineteen, that was the major part of our conversation, and it's come a long way since then. But I still think that there's, there's, we think there's more possibility there for more, um, interaction. Create an FAQ on the forestry webpage, and then that will help Colin with a little less time, hopefully, but people can get, um, the information that they need that way. And then participate in regional forestry networks to share information. So there are some outstanding opportunities in Oklahoma. There's some really great things in northern Texas. There are, um, conferences all over the country to get ideas and to learn from, and we suggest that, that the network be built and to, to get ideas and learn more. So that is what I've got.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions, comments?
Just one. I saw you said you were proposing a million-dollar increase to the budget. Is that what I saw? That it's about four hundred and ninety thousand now, and it's gonna go to one point four or something? I just, I was curi- I was curious if that was all staff, if there was anything else that that money was going towards.
That was the staffing.
That's just for staff?
That's staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, the gravel truck is probably one point. I don't know how much gravel truck is.
That's the one with the big.
Yeah, that's the one that, yeah, it does that. And, and it's interesting, and what I'm seeing across the country is more and more cities are getting gravel trucks because more and more cities are taking down logs in workable sizes so that they can actually reuse that wood. And if you take them down this big, there's nobody but turning bowls, you know? This big, you can make lumber.
That's a good point. I guess you could also use those for old trash pickup as well. I don't know if that's the same truck, but it's just pretty gross.
I was curious about federal funding. Um, has that been slashed? I know that a lot has been slashed, but.
I, I spent a lot of time on the phone counseling a lot of people, um, after the election this year with what happened. So many of projects are gone. Much of the federal funding was gone, so that was mostly, um, there. In the last budget, it was, uh, the Urban Community Forestry Program was zeroed out at the national level. It was brought back for, it's in the budget for next year. Um, so there are pass-through grants, usually through states. However, those are not very big. Um, in, in my notes, and I didn't read it because it's so negative, but it's time to stop, um, it's time to stop depending on federal funding. Um, Urban Community Forestry has really, um, it's grown in cities, and there are many states that do not have anything but federal funding. They will no longer have a program this year. I, I live in one of those, Colorado.
How do other cities finance, uh, tree maintenance?
So they, uh, there's a variety of ways. Um, they, um, they use, um, tax money through, like, for example, city of Sacramento, um, used to use their gas tax money. That's one of the ways that they did it. Uh, most of it's general fund. Um, it's, um, it really does come out of the general fund for the most part. The, there are, um, I'm trying to think of other cities. Denver uses a, has a use tax, um, that they have. Their parks, they have a parks board that does, um, so they have parks and streets separately. So they do, um, their parks board has a, a parks tax within their, um, property taxes. So mostly tax-funded.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to say that, one, what a great job that you do by yourself over there, you know, with a little bit of guidance and everything like that, but.
The work of eleven men, right?
In the business world, running businesses and stuff in the past and everything, it is never a good business practice to only have one person that works there and does everything. Because lord forbid if you lose that one person, you just lost all that knowledge. So I think that what we need to do, you know, we might not be able to come up with a million for all the ask, but maybe, you know, little by little, one person here, one person there. That way, he's able to share that wealth of knowledge, bring in some younger people with new ways of thinking also to help, where they can collaborate together and come up with even greater ideas and everything like that, and be able to spread this word quicker where with one person trying to do all of this on their own. I mean, it's gonna take a lot longer time and everything. So I think as a city protecting the assets of our trees for the future, an investment would be good to have somebody else too there.
Your priorities are our priorities. Uh, we are about that close to starting budget development all over again. And, uh, we're happy to take that, uh, direction and bring it back to you and what that final document will look like.
I would say, um, if we can identify cost savings that would pay for it, as mentioned, if, like, what are we spending on debris removal, tree removal, storm cleanup? I haven't had like a major big storm lately, I think, like, we've had a few in the past, in the last decade, fifteen years that we know, uh, if you're going back to two thousand.
if you're going back to two thousand and seven, that was the third one. But anyway, if there are cost savings that we can identify on storm cleanup contracting, as you mentioned, if we're not having to hire a professional company for something because we are able to do it, because we have the gravel truck or whatnot, how much of an impact could that have if we could identify those savings? And then, the, because I was just mentioning to you, if we were to increase, put to voters to ask them to increase the visitor tax again in the near future, would, we could probably dedicate, propose dedicating a piece of that to this, this parks function. Part of it already does go to parks and recs, so maybe that's something we can think about going down the road, and maybe we can get the public to get behind that too as a possible funding source. And then, I mean, I would like to see us really be aggressive about our policy on planting street trees and any street projects that we do that, you know, we, if we have to remove a tree, we put four of them back, something like that, you know? That's just an example, but being aggressive about what we can do on city property where it's, makes sense and is responsible to plant as many trees. Some of the best, I mean, to me, the best streets in Norman are the ones that are tree-lined. And I know that can be an issue if we're not taking real, as good of care of them as we need to, and there's a storm, and there's debris. But I mean, yeah, the best streets in Norman are the ones that are tree-lined. You're stuck at the light, and you got this big tree that's blocking the sun, so you're not baking. I mean, it's just, and it just, it makes the city look nicer. It makes the neighborhoods look nice, and...
Because they're covered down.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's always been one of my favorite things about Norman. And we see when old trees get cut down how, like, physically emotional people can get about, about that. And so, I feel that way sometimes. I feel that way about the trees at Reeves Park, along Jenkins, you know? And so, so, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see us add into our plan being just as aggressive as possible on our projects when it comes to landscaping and tree requirements. But I think we got a pretty good thing in front of us, to a guide, a roadmap to, to follow here. And so, is there any other comments, questions, Councilor Pico?
I know we didn't talk about it at the retreat as a priority, but we had discussed that idea of a tree retrofit program six, eight months ago, basically taking existing parking lots and places that don't have trees and figuring out a fund or a mechanism to retrofit those parking lots with trees. So, I'd like to see that come back sometime.
The Hanford, Hanford, California policy.
What incentive might we offer to?
Yes, I worked on that policy.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because I worked on the one in Bakersfield, and Bakersfield and Hanford, yeah.
I was, I took my dad there, out there, to the west coast to see the Pacific Ocean two summers ago, and we stayed in Bakersfield at a friend's house, and then I drove, we drove up to Hanford because I wanted to see the birthplace hometown of Steve Perry of Journey.
That's what people who go to the valley do.
But also because it's where we hired Daryl from, was Hanford.
Nice.
And so, I wanted to see what it was like where Daryl came from. And we needed to use the bathroom, and I couldn't really find anywhere out there, actually. And so, we looked up where the nearest Walmart Supercenter was, went to it, and I had never seen a big box retail strip mall have so many trees in the parking lot. Like, every fourth space, there was a big tree, like, the whole parking lot was, like, shaded. I'd never seen anything like that.
About every four spaces.
And it was like, had all the drainage of the parking lot was going into the tree wells, and...
That your work, Dana?
That part was not. They modeled the, they, we had a, we had one, a parking lot shade ordinance in Bakersfield that we modeled off of Davis. And I worked for the tree nonprofit in Bakersfield at the time. And so, then Hanford called us and said, "What'd you guys do?" And so, you must have been there when that happened.
I text Daryl while I was out there.
I think it's, when you brought that up, when you look at a canopy, when you look at the canopy and you look at what, heat island, we talk a lot about heat island, but cities, all, all parts of cities are becoming heat islands right now. But parking lots in particular are, are that area that is really, really bad, so...
Only thing you can do to offset a big asphalt parking lot, only option available is to...
Well, in a neighborhood where there's a tree canopy and the houses have a lot of tree coverage, and I've lived in one that's had almost entire tree coverage except for in the morning. And I think about, when I see houses that have no trees around them, and I think, "That house is just, from sunrise to sunset, is baking in the sun, the attic, and your heat, you're running that AC if you don't have any trees at all." So, I, yeah, anyway, so... Okay, well, really appreciate the work on this, and I think we got a pretty good thing to pursue on this with funding and other ideas where we can maybe reduce some costs and all that. So, any other final comment or anything? Okay?
Thank you for the opportunity for us to be with you. It's been great.